But since then, it's been brought to my attention by Mr. Flaherty that perhaps that should have been a discussion of the whole school committee. And so, we did not have that discussion in time this week to put it on an agenda for today, but we will have it on the agenda for next time. But in the meantime, we welcome Dr. Schwam and her contribution. Thank you. Also, I forgot to say, and I did this last time too, the meeting is being recorded and broadcast by WCTV, and an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the committee? No one? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the next item, which is good news. Would anyone like to share any good news?
The Wareham High School has been named to the MIAA Sportsmanship Honor Roll for the 2017-18 school year. This honor has been bestowed upon our school as none of our athletes were disqualified during any contest during their season. So congratulations, and we're so proud of the sportsmanship which our athletes display.
I would just like to share that I did get to go to the back-to-school night at Deccas, I think that was since our last meeting, and the back-to-school night at Minnet. And so, thank you to the PTA for contributing to that and making that happen. It was really great. Everyone was so excited to come in and see where their class was, and it's such a great opportunity for the families to get comfortable with the building. I mean, I know how much that would have meant to me with children that age, so I know how much it means to them. So, thank you for having that happen. And I got to talk to people from different buildings after the start of school, and it seems like everything is going well, aside from the heat. But other than that, the things that we can control are going well, so thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting from last, our last meeting was August 23rd. Does anyone have any questions or changes to those minutes? Nope? All right. Could we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the update on the elementary building project.
We want to hear all voices. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, I thought I would bring some staff members to the table where they can update you on their part and their role, and how they've been involved as staff to the school building project. So if you would like to introduce yourselves and tell us your role, please.
I'm Tom Tricker, I'm the art teacher at Deccas Elementary School.
Jackie DeGraysmith, our grade teacher at Minnet.
Nancy Newton, art teacher at Minnet.
I'm Marie Jacinto, and I'm the first-grade teacher at Deccas School.
So who would like to start, as far as explaining to the committee the process and the role that you've had in visioning workshops and ideas that you've had that have been incorporated into the design and everything?
I can start. I just hope I remember the name of the committee, Joan. Back in January, February, December, January, and February, I was fortunate to be part of a group that met not just teachers, but teachers, community members. It was a great experience, where we got to work with the architects and plan the design, or help to plan our vision for what we thought would be ideal for these schools, and especially for an early childhood and elementary school. So being part of that was really wonderful, a good experience. We brought a lot of ideas to the table, and we were able to bring ideas from our colleagues that we worked with, and share those ideas as well. And I think, from what I could see, the architects did a pretty good job putting things together for us.
Mrs. Newton?
On the same committee, I think the greatest part was being able to reach for things and imagine things that we never thought that we would have. And when the architects came together, they put all of our ideas together, and lo and behold, some of those dream wishes came true. And that, having Mr. Tricker and I having been on a cart for so long, this has truly been an amazing experience. And to be able to have the possibility of a wonderful state-of-the-art art room and other rooms adjacent to it with steam, and a gallery space, and things like that, is just absolutely wonderful.
As a classroom teacher, Mrs. DeGrays, what are you looking forward to?
I think the most exciting thing for me was to see that the space allows for us to collaborate and innovate together, either with the grade levels or even across grade levels. And I really felt as though we all got to put our thoughts and our input in, and it's just really exciting.
I wasn't part of the original imagineering part of it, but when I saw the plans from the architect, I thought, this is an art room that I would have designed. They really thought about everything. Like Nancy said, we're on carts. The art rooms would be, we were talking about just the type of materials that would be in the art room, as far as like the flooring. Some of the rooms that we go into now have carpet, and we're on carts, and it's very hard, we have to bring everything in with us. So for painting, we have to make sure, some of the rooms I teach in don't have sinks, so I have to bring in the water, the paint, the palettes, everything for the students, to make sure that, I spend so much time, I want them to still have that painting experience, but I spend so much time trying to get things prepped for it and with them, so that we can paint in an environment that's going to be safe and not cause a huge mess, and then cleaning up. If we had our own space, then we could do more with the painting. Last year, Amy Dionne and I got a grant from the Cape Cod Five to do a clay day, so we brought some high school students over, and they helped my second graders do clay, and they loved it. Some kids, it was their first experience using clay. You know, we've got kids who are good at drawing and painting, but some of the students' clay was really the material, the medium, that they should be working with. It was very tactile, they were able to do something with it. So we made them there, I had to drive them back to the high school, fire them, bring them back, and hope that they didn't, we didn't have too much breakage, that they don't break. We made some extras, and the kids painted them, then they were able to take them home. So they're very proud of that. With this new school, that allows us space to have a kiln, so that we could do the clay with the students in the school, fire it, you know, we didn't get into glazing because it's a whole nother process, paint it, whatever, but they gave them the opportunity to know, and I kept saying to them, they were like, oh, we love this, can we do this more? And I'm like, you'll be able to do this more when you're a little bit older, at the high school, I don't know if we offer it at the middle school.
We do.
Or at the middle school. But to give them that experience earlier, I think is going to be an awesome opportunity for our students.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do. So this all sounds so wonderful, and I've been in many schools where they do have art rooms, they have music rooms, and then all of a sudden, the school becomes overcrowded, and the people are put back on carts. So are you confident that there's going to be enough space in that room to prevent that? I mean, in the school, not the room.
Yeah, we've been looking at enrollment all along, so that's all part of the plan. So we have the classroom space that we need, in each of the wings that are being designed.
Do you actually have extra classroom space?
We have to go by the MSBA guidelines, so...
They plan for more.
They do plan for more, yes.
They'll give you an amount, but they also project out, because they don't want to be in that position either.
Right.
Yeah, so we have flexibility.
Okay, good.
I mean, on that note, was the number I heard, it's like 80, 85% capacity it's built for? So there's that much room left?
And we've, we really, as we've heard that there may be some developments coming in, we brought that to their attention, asking, well, you know, we could open and be right at capacity. They were not budging. So we defended our numbers, we developed it, so there is some flexibility with the rooms, but for space that MSBA will reimburse for its very strict guidelines.
They actually took it a step further and visited Wareham, which is something they don't do routinely, based on, just to get an idea of what the space needs for. Rebecca?
Thank you so much for participating in this and being a part of the planning. With your help, it sounds like this new design is going to allow you to do what you want to do, which is spend time with the students, and mentoring, and inspiring them, instead of making up for the deficiency in the building. Thank you so much for doing this for our kids.
And as Marie said, with the visioning workshops, it wasn't just teachers, we had community members there. So this is a building for our community, not just for our school. So we're looking forward to that piece of it as well. And there's information on the website, if anyone needs to have frequently asked questions, or they want to see what's been happening at our meetings, and that's newschool.warehamps.org. So you can always go to the website if you have any questions. And as we start hearing them, we're putting those questions right on the frequently asked question guidelines, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, before you go, so today, we did, we were able to plan some community forums, so those dates will be coming forward, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but they'll be made public, so I just encourage anyone who has questions or wants to learn more, you know, to pay attention for those dates, we'll publicize them and get to share all that information with everyone.
September and October, so once we have the building space, the meeting locations, we'll get that information out.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what was mentioned about the group in general, it's really a great cross-section of stakeholders. It's, I came in late, as you did, to the process, and I was really impressed with who was on that board, and it's all the right people, and like was mentioned, you'd come up with these ideas that you never thought was imaginable, and I get more and more excited about it, the more I hear about it, I just hope it goes through, because we need it. I mean, just fundamental things like, you know, an art room without a rug, you know, come on.
Or a room without a sink.
A sink, you know, come on, you know?
Our kids deserve...
Of course, yes, yes.
And these are the dreams that, you know, Mrs. Newton's talking about, is being able to have a room and materials and things like that.
It's not too much to ask for just the basics that you need to...
Right, yeah.
In, you know, Deccas and some other rooms at the middle school right now, where the Minnet is, we don't have air conditioning, so this first week has been pretty warm. But a new building would have the dehumidification cooling, so that it'll feel cool in the buildings, and it won't feel like the rainforest.
All right, thank you, everybody.
I also just want to say, I'm really excited to see this, because I want to see how you guys incorporate the STEAM program, because that has been like a really big part of learning for me, and I'm really excited to watch that happen, so thank you, guys.
You're welcome, and we have a special space just for STEAM.
Two, actually. We have a dry, we have a dry space and a wet space.
And all surrounding with the, on the second floor, Emily, with the art rooms, so we all can collaborate together and have space that we can come together and participate in different things, so that's a great thing. It's exciting.
Okay, we're done?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, well, there was to be a report from the Director of Student Services, but that, she was unable to be here tonight, so that will happen at our next meeting. So the next item on the agenda is the report of the Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. This is more of an update rather than a specific report, but what I wanted to do was talk a little bit about the beginning of the 1819 school year, as it's been extremely successful, and without exception, everyone has worked diligently to prepare for the return of all staff and students. We welcomed our new staff with a two-day workshop that included an overview of district initiatives, as well as ALICE training, which is our safety and security protocols, and a classroom management training on day two. We offer a variety of professional development when staff returned on August 27th and 28th. Spring assessments from last year were transferred to data walls for all teachers in grades one through five, and the kindergarten screening was provided to K-teachers, so all kids that were screened pre-K have the data now, before they arrived, which was very exciting, quite a feat, but I'm very grateful it's there. Teachers have already been engaged in conversations and plans that are informed by this data. FAST is up and ready to go as well, and fall assessments have begun. So we try to get that data pretty quickly, so that we can move into action as fast as possible. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education informed us that they will be here for a district review. The last was done in 2012, the written report followed in February 2013. That report is available on the website, you can get it anywhere at any time that you like. Our team will be collecting all of the necessary artifacts connected to each standard, and uploading those into the security portal by November 21st. The onsite portion of the district review for the Wareham Public Schools is scheduled from December 10th through the 13th. This initiative is an all-hands-on-deck, it includes everyone, and we are taking it very seriously, and you will all also be involved, because they ask about governance, leadership, they talk to the town officials, they come and speak with teachers, and et cetera. So we've already started preparation, and we've already created leadership teams, and meetings are scheduled to meet with them and collect the artifacts and get some feedback, because if it was left up to me, I think we're excellent everywhere, so I need the feedback. But the standards they include are leadership and governance, and with each standard, there are indicators. Indicators are school committee governance, district and school leadership, district and improvement planning, and budget development. Standard number two is curriculum and instruction, and the indicators are curriculum selection and use, classroom instruction, and three, student access to coursework. Standard number three, data collection system, data use, and sharing of those results. Standard number four is human resources and professional development, human resource infrastructure, recruitment, hiring, and assignment, supervision, evaluation, and educator development, recognition, leadership development, and advancement. Standard five is student support, safe and supportive school, climate and culture, tiered systems of support, family and community engagement. Standard number six is financial and asset management, which includes budget documentation and reporting, adequate budget, financial tracking, forecasting, control and audits, capital planning, and facility management. So we will be addressing all of those areas, we have, I've already started to collect artifacts, more will come, and we'll need your help, obviously, with the standard one, so we'll be getting back to you on that. Any questions?
Is this like a reading?
It's bigger than that, I would say. It's similar to a CPR that they do for special education when they come in, so they're looking at all of these areas, then they will, there's a group of people that come, they analyze, assess, look at all of this information, interview people, go to classrooms, all of it, and then they report back to us. We have an opportunity to communicate with them, then that report is delivered to the school committee, so it's a big deal.
And what happened after the 2013 review?
It was not good. So I've looked at that carefully, and identified their recommendations, and I have answered them in my own, with artifacts that we've done, as a way to see, where are we compared to where they said we were, right? Because I was really concerned about that. And we're in a really good place, so I'm not, I'm excited about where we've come from that point, and so I really am hopeful that what we can provide them is with enough evidence and a positive outlook on knowing clearly where our issues are, and knowing what we're going to do about those issues, and also understanding where we've come from as a result of that information from the past, right? And that's what we can do, so that's the plan.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Any more questions? I just have a question. So is the new report an independent report, or is it a progress? Like, is it going to show...
It's both.
Okay.
So they're not just looking at, they're not coming in just on that, right? They'll use that probably as a marker of some kind to say, to look at where we've come, I think, or I hope, almost, right, from that point. But it will also be new in that it's a new discovery, and if I were going to relate it to anything, even though when I spoke to them, they didn't necessarily agree with me, but both Dr. Shaverhood and I have been on NIASC visits, and they're pretty arduous. You're there for three days, you start work at seven, you don't stop until 10:00 PM, and you're actually there to go over certain standards and indicators at schools, at other schools. And it's quite an experience, but I liken it to that, you're engaged and involved actively in what's going on within the school in all of those similar areas, actually. So I think both of us having that experience, and as well as other people on the leadership team have also gone to NIASC visits, I know Amy Dionne is off to one this year, Scott's been a few times. So I think that those, having that level, and Debbie Freitas has been, so we have a level of expertise in the response, being able to respond to what they're asking in a way that I think will show well for Wareham, which is what we would like to have happen.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the acceptance of gifts.
I would like to recommend the following gifts, $6,050 from the Daniel Tabor Golf Tournament for the Yes Builders Club stage at the Wareham Middle School, and $58.45 from K2 Licensing LLC and YourCause.com to use to offset the cost of snacks for students during MCAS. I would like to ask the committee to approve both gifts.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is adoption of new policies. So at our last meeting, we discussed five new policies, and following the process that's included in these policies, this is the meeting where we would vote to approve them. So we'll just go in the order that they're printed on the agenda, and I'll just ask for each policy if anyone has any questions or discussion about each policy.
Just, can we take one out of order, just because it's sort of is relevant to voting on?
Which one?
Just the one policy adoption.
Okay.
All right, so, or we can go back in order, but I guess, just for clarification, you go down, you have numbered steps here, and so the first item was like introduction, right, and you did that last meeting, right? So then, the second item, I'm guessing is that that's the second meeting, the discussion item?
I believe on the last agenda, we included information, so distribution and discussion at the last meeting.
So that was, okay, those one and two were in the same meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Okay.
I suppose they could be split into three meetings, but we made it clear at the last meeting that we were including those first two in that meeting.
Yeah, and that was my question when we got to this one, is was this intended to be three separate meetings?
Again, it could be.
Yeah.
But the way we presented it was the first two together.
I guess when we get to this, I'd like to be clear, it seems to make sense, like, why separate them then? Like, I think they might, they should be like separate meetings, but you already covered it, like you said, last time.
Okay. So the first policy is school committee member ethics. Does anyone have any questions or comments or changes? Anyone?
So, all right, it's short, which I like, but I'd like somewhere in there to be clear that these are non-binding.
The protocols?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, go ahead, Laurie.
Isn't the points of a policy, I mean, non-binding in what sense?
Well, it says, for example, it says, for example, "The Wareham School Committee has adopted school committee-superintendent operating protocols. These protocols will be reviewed and signed yearly at the first meeting following the spring election, and/or whenever the new committee member or superintendent begins their term of service." And it's just not, and separately, I think we need to attach, you know, the actual protocol, so that's part of the policy, but it needs to be clear somewhere, either in this paragraph or in the protocols, that, you know, this is, they're not binding, you can't force people to behave a certain way.
Well, I guess what I would say to that is you can't force someone to behave a certain way.
But you can set a standard.
Sure, yeah, a non-binding standard.
An expectation for how we will communicate and behave with one another. But that was pretty much spelled out in the protocols, and so, and it's not mandatory to sign the protocols, obviously, so...
Adding the word "non-binding" makes me feel as if it's already predisposed to that somebody's not going to want to follow them.
It was a suggestion.
So my question is, if someone doesn't follow them, then you're saying they can be thrown off the committee?
No.
Okay. So I would consider that not binding then, right?
Right, it's just that was a voluntary agreement that we signed.
Voluntary, how about the word voluntary?
Well, it's voluntary, it's already voluntary.
So what does it hurt to mention it?
The protocols.
Like, "The Wareham School Committee has adopted voluntary school committee-superintendent operating protocols." I like that.
I just, I, well, I just disagree. I think that if, you know, if you reference the protocols, which if they're not already on the website, they will be on the website, I think that's pretty clear already, but if you want to...
I'll make a motion to add voluntary where I mentioned earlier.
Okay. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Abstain? So it's two, three, zero. So I guess I would look for a motion to approve this policy, unless there's more discussion. Is there a second? Second. To approve the policy as written. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? So it's three, two, zero. Thank you. So the next policy is school committee policy development. Are there any comments or questions about this one? I'll say again, is this isn't new, this is just putting into, writing into policy what has been past practice around policy development.
I guess I'll mention it like we did the first time, it just seems redundant, like, can we just merge like school committee policy development and policy adoption? Have it be like a preamble or something?
I mean, I guess we could, but I really feel like they're too different, there's enough in each of them to keep them separate.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this policy, or policy development? Policy development? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5, 0, 0. Thank you. So, then the next one is policy adoption, which we did already talk about a little. So, what you're asking, do we put the first two together and make it two steps, or...
I inferred that it was three separate meetings, but I guess it doesn't have to be.
Uh huh.
I don't know why there's two separate steps, just...
Okay. Well, we could combine those first two and make it two steps. Michelle, can you tell me, can we make that change now and vote on it, or would you like to come back for a vote? We can make the, just combine the first two?
But in doing so, then it would be two distinct, separate meetings.
It would, just like it was in this case.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Well, because I think the, well, the way I understand it, so it will be distributed with the agenda, so that would give you about a week to review it, so that's enough time then to have a discussion at the next meeting. So, it makes sense to put it into just two steps instead of three.
And at the second meeting, it's clearly that, you know, when we're talking about the action, there's also time to discuss it before it's adopted.
Right, right.
So, it's two meetings to where we needed to discuss it.
Uh huh, absolutely.
And now, should, is this just for existing policies, or is it for new policies as well?
This is for new policy.
For new policy?
Uh huh.
All right, so, and that's, I see where he has, in number two, "Response from Superintendent, semicolon, 'Report from any advisory committee assigned responsibility in the area.'" They, I don't see the advisor, any advisory committee as part of this process until it's already been proposed.
Right, but I suppose would there ever be a time? Go ahead.
There could be a time. So, for example, there are times when there are people who need to develop a policy as a result of a new program, or a process, or something that's going on in their schools, and they would get together as a group, and then they, but they would have to follow these programs.
Your mic.
Oh, sorry. They would have to, they would have to come together, follow the, this, these rules, which I think this is really what they're for. For anyone who is deciding that they think something should become a policy, they have to come before you. So, they come before you as a consideration to decide whether or not you would consider adopting a policy for that matter.
So, it wouldn't necessarily happen every time, but it could happen.
So, in that example, when would an advisory committee, you know, be involved?
They would have to come here first with a new policy, yes.
So, but we'd have to discuss it and approve or disapprove it, and then?
Well, they may propose it, and they may come to discuss it during that first meeting. In other words, you would get it ahead of time, you'd have the week to review it, you'd have that meeting, and those people would then be coming to answer any questions that the school committee may have about that policy.
Should we just remove advisory committee from that?
Well, no, because she's saying there could be an advisory committee. There isn't on every policy.
Oh, I think I see what you're...
See what I mean? Like, there's a group of people at a school, and they want, they need a, they feel like they need a policy, but they can't just make a policy without following these rules.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So...
And now, it's going to be one step, so that would happen at the first meeting.
All right.
Where it'd be discussed.
Oh, also, the note at the very bottom in bold, it said, "Accepting emergency situation policy should not be adopted at the meeting at which they are initially introduced," and that seemed redundant with the sentence, like, about the three sentences. "The school committee may dispense with the above sequence to meet emergency conditions." It says the same thing, really. So, can we just get rid of the bottom?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
It's redundant.
All right.
Yep.
So, I would move to adopt this policy minus the bullet pot at the bottom.
Okay. And to combine steps one and two.
Oh, yes, yes, and merge one and two.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5, 0, 0. The next policy is policy revision and review. Does anyone have any questions about this policy? Any changes to be made? Okay. If there aren't any?
That's how I feel, I mean...
It doesn't like that one.
So, if there's no discussion or changes to be made, is there a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And finally, the policy, oh, sorry. 5, 0, 0, Michelle, sorry. The next policy is district and school family engagement. Is there any questions or discussion about this?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, that's pretty much verbatim what we're allowed, what we have to do per the state law.
Per Title I.
Title I.
Yeah, and just a commentary, that, that's what's so, when I used to be on the policy review committee, it was so frustrating, it's like, why are you there? I mean, you're forced to make these policies that are written for you, it's like, why do you, what's the point? But that's just commentary, so of course I'll approve it, like, you have no choice.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? 5, 0, 0. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent.
I would ask for approval of the following bill and payroll warrants. In addition to what you have listed on your superintendent's newsletter, there's a warrant dated September 13th in the amount of $13,730, and a payroll, again, on the 13th in the amount of $828,845.71. I would ask you to please approve five warrants altogether.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained? Opposed? 5, 0, 0. Okay.
Thank you. Just some information to share with you. DECA is Fun Friday tomorrow. Members of the local fire union have volunteered to clean up the outdoor classroom. Our thanks goes out to all those who are helping with this project. Tomorrow, big day, first day of kindergarten and preschool, so we're quite excited to welcome our new students to the district. I'd also share with parents of the elementary students to please understand busing home may be a little bit delayed, because we have some young ones that this is their first time on the bus. So, we certainly will keep you updated by an email or a message, depending on if we are running late. PTA will be meeting Monday night in the middle school library, and this is the joint PTA for all the district middle school. The Stage Weekend Backpack Program is looking for slightly-used backpacks, which people would like to repurchase, repurpose. If you have some, please drop them off at the middle school office. Tonight, MINIT held their open house, and as the parking lot looked, it was, it was attended by many people, and I'm sure it was a success. And tomorrow, there's a band demonstration for all fourth graders. Senior pictures already, can you believe it, will be taken on September 10th, which is Monday. Path school, night school begins on Monday, and there's a public safety event on Saturday, September 8th, from 2:00 to 5:00, and it will be at the Wareham Track. The bus, bus passes will be handed out on Monday. As to date, 734 students have yet to complete forms, so if you're a family that has yet to complete a form, please, please do so. Bus passes handed out Monday. If a student is riding the bus and does not receive a pass, they will be handed a form, which must be filled out and returned by Tuesday, September 11th. All forms received after September 11th will be placed on a waiting list. We have to have a cutoff, we've extended this numerous times, we really need the cooperation of the families and the students who are riding the buses, please fill out those forms. And currently, the enrollment today was 2,193 students. This does not include students who have enrolled but yet have not been put into our system, so we do expect to go up over 2,200. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and other than that, that completes my report.
Any questions, Matt?
So, just out of curiosity, why are we starting kindergarten and preschool on a Friday? Just curious.
I think they would like to get our little cherubs in, and have them a day, and let them get acclimated, and then go home.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, just, just different to me.
How many students do we have enrolled in the PATH program this year?
Right now, we have 36 Wareham students, and I'm holding about 15 school choice students, and we're still anticipating some other students coming.
Do we have a cutoff for that, for that program? For number of students?
Wednesday, yes. Because of the classes that they'll miss, they have to have enrollment by Wednesday.
Do we have a cutoff as far as number of students?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, no. But we do for the date.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there childcare available at the first PTA meeting? Is that...
Oh, good question.
Because there's like many volunteers that would be available.
Yes.
Excellent.
What time is the PTA meeting?
6:30.
Thank you.
In the library.
Emily, is that something that the Honor Society at the high school would be interested?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Mark that out. Okay, next on the agenda is reports of the school committee. Are there any reports? Have there been any meetings?
I'll just mention that the first meeting of the collaborative is the 13th.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that also the boosters night?
Is that a Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, so, so you don't have to worry about me being there.
Okay. Is there any other business that was not anticipated 48 hours before the meeting? Rebecca?
Reminding people who might be interested in being a part of the boosters, when our next meeting might be.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead.
It's Thursday night at, September 13th, at 6 o'clock at the high school. Thank you.
So, that's anyone who would like to be a part of the athletic boosters.
Anyone who would like to be a part, you don't have to be a parent of a high school athlete, anyone in the community who just wants to participate, it's loads of fun.
Show your Wareham pride.
Yes, yes. Thank you. So, there's no other business? Could I have a motion adjourned?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.